Hi Kaylee, we can see you and heard you. I've muted your microphone as we're about to start the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First want to acknowledge that we are holding this meeting on the traditional lands of the South Nation and whose territory that we are on. I'd like to also acknowledge that Mayor Tate is unable to be with us in person, but she is on the phone with us today, and so glad to have her here. The first thing is that the ministerial order M 192, that the committee of the whole is holding this meeting without members of the public in attendance under ministerial order 192, as council chambers cannot safely accommodate the unknown number of public participants wishing to attend, and that the committee of a whole is committed to ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability through the submissions of written comments and the provision of live and recorded broadcasts of the meeting. Could I have, everybody has your agenda in front of them, could I have a motion to a Counselor St Pierre's move? We don't need a seconder. Any questions to the motion? Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. That is passed. Mayor Tate, did you raise your hand?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, our first order of business is delegations 4.1, proposed elders complex for lot A, Suk Regional Community Health Network. And we can turn that over to Carolyn. You got that ready to go?
The approval of the agenda.
I thought we just did that.
You did the motion for the ministerial order?
Okay, well that's the one I didn't do. I did the agenda. So I need a motion for the ministerial order, please. And that's Counselor McMath. Any questions to the motion? Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. That's passed unanimously. So now we're ready to go.
Okay, who is going to speak on behalf of the delegation? Please go ahead.
Great. Good morning, everybody. My name's Kaylee Wiseman. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Okay, great. And I guess a quick question. Shall I be sharing my screen or is the PowerPoint up in council chambers for folks?
If you would like to share it, you can go right ahead. I have a backup copy should the technology fail.
Great. Let's see if this will work.
Yep, we can see it. Go ahead, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so good afternoon, everybody. My name's Kaylee Wiseman and I'm working with Search &amp; as their manager and coordinator as we apply for funding for the elders care project. If I can... Can everyone see that okay? I'm getting a signal of poor network quality.
We can see project updates is on the screen.
Okay, great. So I guess I just wanted to provide a quick update to folks on where the project is at, perhaps since mayor and council last heard about it. So we've been working closely with planning staff, with Matthew and with Catherine, as well as Norm, on communicating fairly frequently on our funding applications. So we did complete, based on the commitments we've made to the district, the first scope of work, based on the first funding draw that was provided in August from the district. Our commitments during that time were to complete preliminary designs to support an application to an infrastructure grant that was due on October 1st to the province. So we did successfully submit that, and it included conceptual designs citing the project as well as a functional program, which I'll get to in a minute, about the residential component as well as the senior center component of the project. Included in that submission was some architectural work that we hired a group, Mobius, from the Sunshine Coast to support the society in, as well as preliminary project planning, as well as a CMHC seed funding application. So that was submitted last week as part of that initial funding draw. So our next steps is to coordinate with planning staff, which we're doing at the moment, to support them in a rezoning for lot A. And we're hoping that the district will get that in fairly quickly, and that'll happen sometime in October, early November. And then our next deadline that we're moving towards is submitting to BC Housing for their community housing fund. That application is due January 15th, and it will require a number of further components that I'll get into in a moment. So I just wanted to quickly share with you the work that we've completed to date on the preliminary design side. So what you can see in front of you is the first floor, the footprint of the first floor. That includes both the senior center as well as some residential components. And detailing this out, we call it a functional program, was really in large part for the infrastructure grant that we submitted in October 1st. So at a conceptual first glance, we're looking at just under 8,000 square feet of an elder center. So that would be a community senior center that would include a commercial kitchen, a number of dining and multipurpose rooms and gathering rooms, washrooms and other facilities, as well as a potential space for a loan cupboard, for a community loan sharing of equipment. And that has public access and a public parking area directly in front that's fully accessible. And on the right side of the screen, you'll see a few lease spaces that we're contemplating for community leases, commercial leases, to nonprofits, things like that, as well as a number of four right now, one-bedroom residential units, as well as one potential two-bedroom unit, and associated amenity space and deck space for those residential units. So this is what was submitted for the infrastructure grant, specifically for funding through a grant, the non-residential or the senior center component. So as we move up the building, we've got approximately 73 units of mixed one and two bedrooms, all dedicated for seniors, with a number of affordability and accessibility diversity across those units. There is shared laundry and amenity space on each floor, as well as balconies for each of the units, and one small menageette as well. So the floor plates of each of the residential units are most likely the same from the second floor up to the top floor of the building. Right now, at first glance, we've gone through a couple schematic designs of where to site the project on that northeast quadrant of lot A. I'm sure folks that have walked the site know that there's a significant grade to this component of the lot. So based on the information in the shret, as well as the residential needs of elders targeted population, as well as aligning the access points currently with the library designs. So we have been in touch with the project management team on the library project. We've chosen to site the building at this time on the rear portion of lot A. And so you can see a section at the bottom of this project that indicates, to some degree, why we've chosen that from an accessibility perspective, and alignment with a drive aisle to the library component of the project. We've also, in principle, dedicated that front portion of the project for the second or future phase of additional residential units along Wadham's Way. The grade we've also maximized on the rear portion of the building for underground or underbuilding parking. That would be dedicated towards the residential component of the building, whereas the front portion would be dedicated service parking for visitors and access to the elder center. So part of why the sighting was chosen is to deal with some accessibility concerns. Knowing that there would be a lot of public using the elder center, we'd want to reduce the grade or the steps required for them. This would also allow for easy drop-in access, deliveries, and rentals for the elder center. And there were some concerns about citing against Wadham's Way for parking and access, as well as noise, for the potential seniors in the residential components of the building. We requested the architects complete a couple elevations. So in front of you now, you've got some preliminary drawings of what the elevations might look like. We've looked at the town central requirements, so focusing on local materials and west coast styles and accents, including reflection of the library composition, the elevations that have been shared with us from the library team as well. So we've got a rendering of the front side of the building, as well as the rear with some outdoor gathering space that would be part of the amenity contributions. So we've been coordinating with the planning department, who as I mentioned is going to undertake the rezoning for the lot. And they've proposed a comprehensive development zone. That's part of the report that came out from the shret. It includes all of the permitted uses that we're anticipating. The only additional use that might be required is a community or public use as well for the elder center. And the current zone that's proposed does allow for six stories, which is what we're currently proposing. So moving forward, we have a couple questions and clarifications for council. So we know we're seeking some clarity on the preferred location of the complex. We know staff and the shret had some different concepts about where to cite this first phase of this quadrant. We've had a lot of conversations with our architects well around this, so we'd appreciate a conversation. And the next stage, I guess, is as we have been drafting the memorandum of understanding, we've been working closely with Norm on that, for what this relationship on the land and between the society and the district might look like. Part of that would be a second draw request from the preliminary development funds that are available. So as I mentioned, we've delivered on those three main components in our first draw from August. And our second draw was always anticipated for November, and this is outlined in the memorandum of understanding. And the deliverables for that draw would include further design development for our BC housing application, as well as supporting municipal approvals. So while the staff are going to lead the rezoning, we would look at pulling together the development permit in the next four to eight weeks and submitting that to the municipality, as well as associated community consultation. So we're planning on developing a project website and doing door-to-door flyers and engaging with the key stakeholders of the potential project. So I believe that's all I had in terms of a formal presentation. We do have two members of the Search &amp; Board, at least two that I'm aware of, Rick and Mary, online as well to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wiseman. I guess initially, this isn't where it was, you're asking it to be moved to another portion of lot A, I understand.
Correct.
Okay, can I have staff's comment on that, please? Because I understand that it's, we had paid a lot of money for a shret, and it doesn't quite fit with that, so get a comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and with the greatest amount of respect. Dealing with this group has been very, very rewarding. They've done a tremendous amount of work in a short period of time. But we certainly do have differing opinions on the sighting of the building. For two reasons: the amount of engagement that went into the shret and the approval of the shret. And the second is the ultimate phasing and build-out, building out of the east half of that lot will be eminently more easy if this first building is not right in the middle of that section. So I believe it's reasonable to ask as much for the building to be where it was suggested in the shret and the access issues be dealt with as opposed to moving the building.
Thank you, Mr. McInnis. Now I will go to council for any questions to our delegation today. Anybody? Counselor Bateman.
Yeah, thank you very much for this presentation. My aging eyes were unable to really have a close look, of course, at the layout you're proposing. So that, hopefully by council meeting next week, we'll have that, so that we can ask some pertinent depth questions. I did note, I think you've stated the location will be the southern side of the northeast quadrant. Is that correct?
That's currently what we have proposed, correct?
Okay. So you're not wandering into the southeast quadrant? Yeah, okay.
It's very difficult to hear council when they're speaking.
Excuse me, Mr. Robinson?
Well, we're having trouble hearing.
Okay, we'll get Counselor Bateman to redo that question, and you let me know if you don't hear.
So just to be clear, you are remaining focused on the northeast quadrant, except you're seeking to move to the back of that northeast quadrant and towards the center of it, or the southern side of the northeast quadrant?
That's correct.
Okay, our staff has a comment. Mr. McInnis?
I would suggest that they are encroaching upon the other quadrant, and I think that's as much to do with the alignment for the parking with the library. But I think that that can be still, that alignment can be accomplished with moving the building to the front part of the lot as originally planned.
Thank you, Mr. McInnis. Any other? Before we go, another question I'm going to ask other council.
Oh, okay.
Counselor LaGenes, you have the floor.
Yeah, I guess I have a question. I didn't quite catch why the building was moved from the northeast quadrant to the kind of central part of the lot.
Did you hear that?
I did, thank you. It's much better. Most of the concerns, given that the entire building is focused on seniors and elders, is access. So two components to that. One is access to the senior center. So ensuring that there is surface parking available and accessible parking and low barriers to access the senior center, as well as access to the residential component. And so we've been contemplating utilizing the slope to our advantage as much as possible from a cost perspective, and having surface parking that would be in the middle of two buildings that would be accessible to the elders and senior center, and rear underground or underbuilding parking that would be secured and dedicated to folks going to the residential component of the building. So I agree from an infrastructure and a design perspective. I'm sure we can still align the access to the lot with the library access and potentially look at the front, the northern portion of the lot and how we could maximize that portion of the slope to our advantage as well from accessibility perspective. But we do know if the senior center is going to be at grade with Wadham's Way, that most likely folks will be coming around the back of the building, parking and entering through an elevator or stairs.
So I can just speak to that. That presents a great concern. If we have upwards of 100 people attending, which was the case previously with the drop-in center, to expect 100 people to come up in an elevator with COVID, and possibly COVID won't be here at that time, but there'll be another COVID-type thing, which will present some significant problems. In addition, with the loan cupboard equipment coming in, that equipment is considered, when it's been outused by the public, contaminated. And to have that come through an elevator is just not acceptable. It needs to come through a main entrance and quickly go into the loan cupboard for decontamination. Obviously, from an accessibility standpoint, having seniors being able to park their car and walk on a on-grade through the main doors to the elder center makes imminent sense, rather than forcing everyone to come up through an elevator into the main complex. In addition, that presents some problems with security for residents that will be parking their scooters and vehicles in the underground portion of the parking lot under the building. Ideally, we would like that secured. So if you have public coming into that area, then obviously there's no security for for vehicles or scooters or bikes or whatever else is down there.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Counselor McMath, you had some questions?
One, if the group could email us a copy, or staff could email us a copy, because right now, the presentation was wonderful, but we right now are just receiving really for information and take time to digest and hear the reasoning behind the move. But also for us to look at, the move is quite significant, and there is a lot of domino effect that will happen for that. So we need time to fully absorb and then also talk to staff about other opportunities or other venues or look at things like that. We need more time to discuss. So before we spend too much time getting into that, I think we should get a copy of this report that we have in front of us. I had another one, but I'll save it for later. Thank you.
Okay, if I could just comment at this point in time, it's my intention to ask staff for a detailed report to be brought forward for the next meeting. We, I do not exactly have a clear understanding of where it's positioned, and staff has some concerns. And I'd like to have a detailed staff report before we proceed much further with this. And I don't think that's going to be too difficult. We've got a week to our next meeting. And I understand the councils have asked to see this plan in a little bit more detail. So do I need a vote for that?
Mayor Tate is asking to speak.
Oh, yes. Mayor Tate, you certainly may speak.
Thank you, Chair Betto's. Yeah, I agree with getting more information. It's actually easier for me to see it on my screen right now, probably than it is on, for you viewing from chambers on the larger televisions. At first, when I heard that the building was going to shift, I was a bit concerned about that. The concern is still there. It's just how would we deal with just having an unfinished portion of raw land between the new center and Wadham's Way? So I agree with the staff report, but perhaps there's another element within the shret that we could use to advance something there, whether it's the farm market or some kind of public amenity space that could cite there, unless it does have to be a building, in which case we had talked about CMHC, or not CMHC, CRD Housing putting in another building there. So just wanted to see what that potential would look like. I'm fine otherwise to support with the rezoning, the funding requests and the like to advance this. It's great to see so much work has happened so far. And then I do empathize in that as we actually get into the planning and the, into this sort of section of work where we're looking at what the library is doing and how to tie things in. Like, I'm glad the library is sharing over the design details and the like, but now's where we really look at what was sort of a vision into what actually makes practical sense to advance some of the work. We run into that with a lot of projects. I'm thinking even of the lacrosse box where we put a concept forward for the grant. And now that we actually get into the work, the topography, access to the site, residential concerns, and all those become a factor of where things actually come in. So here's where I kind of see a comparison in that it's very important for me that this building is fully accessible. Having a crowd of people line up to access an elevator to go in just doesn't, doesn't make sense. The intent would be to have it that folks could park and easily walk in the front door of a building. So that is a big factor for me. We've also heard in previous discussions that we don't just want to see a lineup of parking right adjacent to the road, that it is better when things are tucked behind. So that's where I like how this compromise has come about. I just want to see that we have something that we can do with the leftover land quite easily and not be stuck with just sort of a, you know, like a nothing, like, you know, no man's land or whatever you want to call it between this Wadham's and the new building. So I totally appreciate that as we're getting into the development of the site, that we are going to encounter these challenges, that we just need to look, I'm looking for council to be a bit flexible in this case, but I also don't want us to be stuck with something we won't be able to use. So that's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments from, okay, Counselor St Pierre?
I had a couple of, I had a couple of comments and a couple of questions. The first one is I like the six stories. I like the additional height very much. And I really appreciate that you've made space for other groups. I'm curious as to whether or not your lockup cupboards wouldn't be best situated with the parking. Just curious about that piece, because there seems to be an issue around that. And it seems like it'd be easier to load and unload if it was on the same floor. And I don't know if that's what the design actually indicates, because I can't quite see it clearly. But that was one thing. The other thing that I maybe don't understand, simply because I can't quite see the topography, is the advantage of actually really putting the site backwards from the road. I would expect seniors to be arriving by bus. I would expect seniors to be arriving potentially on sidewalks using mobility scooters. And then if the, I don't know that it really makes as much, I need to see the topography, because this doesn't make sense to me in terms of actually improving access for seniors. It seems to actually make it worse. I think putting it on Wadham's Way would seem to actually offer access to transit, access to being dropped off more easily, access to coming in by sidewalk. That's kind of my sense, so I'd really like to maybe kick that around and have it considered. Thank you.
I understand Ms. Dunn from the delegation would like to speak. She go ahead, please.
Hi, I was just wanting to answer a couple of the questions that came up. So Mayor Tate, thank you for your comments. What we were, what, one of the things we proposed for the front of the lot to help make it look nice on a temporary basis until something else goes in, and we were anticipating that to possibly be the CRD housing lot, is to build that into community gardens that could be accessible to the community, but also to members, residents of the elders complex. And so that could make a really nice way to complete that front lot that could easily be changed over at a later date when the, when and if that second build happens. Counselor St Pierre, in terms of the bus and sidewalk, what we've seen with our elders in the past few years is they don't use public transit. They don't even use the other transit that we've had available to them to come up to workshops and stuff. They drive. And where this location is, you know, the chance of somebody coming from their home on their scooter via the sidewalk is probably less likely. So our anticipation is that people will be arriving in their vehicles, which is where we wanted to have that public parking area in front of the building, so that people accessing the elders complex, the drop-in center, would have that easy access to be able to park and then just walk in at straight grade. The parking for the residents is going to be under the building, and that is where those locked cupboards will be. So they'll be down with the residential parking area in a secured space.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Now Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, we've now, the PowerPoint is being circulated to us, so I've been able to have a better look at the location. I see it follows pretty directly the StanTech concept site plan. It eliminates the courtyard plaza that was in that site plan. Yeah, I would like to go back through you to our CAO to just clarify your concerns around the sighting.
If you look at the shret diagram, you'll see that senior center was at the front end of the lot. And I still believe that that's the best place to ultimately build out the entire east side of that lot. I see challenges if we build this in the center. And I see absolutely the, some of the options that may come about may be prohibited if we start from the center and work both ways.
And I just had a look this morning at the, who was it? Westbrook did the, did the assessment. And its key point was the entire lot does have grading issues and that engineered fill is required throughout, as much as three to four meters at the lowest point. So engineered fill is always an option for proceeding with the original plan. Thank you.
Just one other thing I could, Mr. Chairman. Any other possibilities on that site or just possibilities at this point? There is certainly nothing that has progressed to the point where we would bring anything forward to council, including the preliminary discussions we've had with CRD Housing.
Is there any other questions, council, to our delegation? Okay, at this time, and I have to go to our corporate officer. Okay, at this time, and I have to go to our corporate officer, I'm contemplating a motion to have CAO and staff do a study on it and get back to us for the next meeting, is that the proper procedure?
It would be. My question would be whether that was to come forward to council before the report that you would normally receive for the rezoning, because that would be a fairly extensive report that it sounds like the team is ready to put forward, probably within the next two meetings, to start the rezoning process.
So, let me get that clear, right now, we're just dealing with possibly relocating it, and then the zoning would come in after that, correct? Go ahead, CAO.
The zoning application is into planning and development already, I've signed that on behalf of the owners, which is the District of Sook. The big issue that we have from a timing perspective is, we need to have a legal survey done, and that legal survey and the MOU that we have with Searchon at this point is requested to be completed by December 31st. So the urgency is around getting the siting down pat, so that we can get the survey done, and we can get the lease, the draft lease in front of council for consideration. So I think that waiting for the zoning report probably is a little too far out, unless we're not, and maybe a question to the delegation, how firm is that December 31st date requirement for the rezoning completion?
To the delegation? You heard that comment?
We did, thank you. To best position for our funding call that closes January 15th, 2021, we'd like the project to proceed as far as possible, so if we could have a rezoning in hand for the end of this year, that would really well position the project for funding.
Council St. Pierre, you had a question? Go ahead.
It's a question to staff, and possibly to the proponents. My understanding is that we have a report that will be coming in with a rezoning application. Would the rezoning be attached with the survey to the siting that's been proposed? Or would rezoning potentially be attached to the uses that are wanted for this particular site as a whole? Is there any flexibility on that? And I guess what I'm really asking is, if we follow through with a report that would come with a rezoning, which would allow council to further debate the merits of the present location and the proposal, could the proponents still use the work of the rezoning for their application, with some flexibility in the future in terms of the siting?
CAO?
Yes, my understanding is that they are two separate things. The rezoning will progress regardless, because that entire half of the lot will be rezoned to the comprehensive development zone. So really, the lease and the survey are the two things that are tied together.
Council McMath?
Maybe I missed something, but when did we agree that we were rezoning this lot?
That was part of the recommendations that were approved by council when the charrette was completed.
So I remember having a discussion around it, but we didn't make a motion to approve a rezoning, because still, even now with this presentation from this group, when I look at the photos, I count five stories, not six, unless that was just like a visual for aesthetic reasons, and P2 zoning allows for five stories, so I still am unclear as to why we're looking at rezoning for this lot, unless we were thinking about sectioning it off and selling it, and that's like another piece for discussion?
So, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is the rezoning issue was put in abeyance when we went to the expression of interest. The expression of interest, we had plenty of debate around whether the rezoning should happen before or after that, ultimately, the decision was that we thought that it may prohibit some submissions for the expression of interest if the rezoning was done beforehand. But there was, when the charrette was ultimately approved, I'm not 100% certain of this, but it's my understanding is that there were certain phases that were agreed to at that point, and rezoning was one of them.
Thank you. Did that answer your question?
No. Sorry, I still feel like we, like, I appreciate that there is an opportunity to look at it, if it becomes a bargaining chip, excuse me, to have someone come forward on that lot, but we, in my opinion, and like, I'll go back and look, we never formally agreed that we would be rezoning, and if we did, what that would be exactly. Also, when the charrette was put forward, I definitely got the sense that planning at the time wanted to push for a rezoning, but again, I feel like I've asked at every stage why, and still haven't heard like a sufficient answer as to why, and it's also too premature at this point, like, we're sort of in limbo right now, because we don't know exactly what we're doing, so I feel like a rezoning should be considered when we have something concrete, and this ask right now from this group, it's still premature, but I'm still not clear as to why we would need to rezone for this group, because all of the definitions, in my opinion, in P2 cover all of the uses that they're asking for. Does that make sense?
Well, I'll wait, and now, I have to agree with, you know, we need more information, and I would like to proceed with, we have a motion put forward there that someone could read out, and allow staff some time to look at this, and maybe even address your question there, Council McMath, but I really don't want to put too much more effort in it today, either because I don't think we have enough information at this point in time, and I'd like to have staff weigh in, they put a lot of stuff, Ms. Machado.
Mayor Tate is requesting to speak again.
Yeah, so, Mayor Tate, over to you.
Thank you. So perhaps when staff reports back, they can also include as to why the site needs to be rezoned, so that's been a recommendation coming from Planning Department ever since the district first acquired this property, and then, my hesitancy in supporting rezoning initially was because we didn't know what was going to be sited on the land. The library fit the zoning criteria, and then there were other pieces, so then through the charrette at that time, then the rezoning recommendation came forward again, and now that we have an active application in place for, I get it that it's not all of it, but it is certainly an outstanding, community amenity that we are needing, that this would be the right time to progress with the rezoning. So perhaps we can just have staff then reply back, is it because of the uses, the height of the property, or whatever, so perhaps in the staff report, then that can be clarified, so then all of council is on the same page. There is a lot of excitement out in the community about this project, I read the article about even the Arts Council approaching Searchon to be a potential fit for the property, having the loan cupboard on site would be a blessing for everyone that needs it, because it'll be easier to access, just to park and access that equipment, so I think that would be helpful for council to receive at the time. But I'm hearing from the applicant that, in order to progress with their full-out application and receive the funding, that they do require the rezoning, and the sooner we get on it, the better. So to me, it seems that we do need to move with the rezoning, and I would be in full support of having a rezoning report, or that process come to us as soon as we can, so that we can take advantage of the grant opportunity and the community collaboration that's in place right now.
Mayor Tate, are you able to see the board that we see about the motion that's going to be put forward?
Yeah, I see 5.1 delegation in front of me.
Okay, good.
So this is where it does say, I see that zoning requirements has been added in no later than November 10th, so I'm prepared to move that motion, that council directs staff to bring forward a report on the siting of the building and zoning requirements no later than November 10th, 2020, I'll make that motion.
Good, that's where I was leaning, somebody to make the motion. Anyways, we don't need a second to do that motion. Do we have any questions to the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise their hand. That's unanimous here, Mayor Tate, I assume since you made it, that you're for that?
You better believe it, thank you.
All right, thanks very much, that is passed unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you for our delegation, we'll probably got more questions coming up in the future, so thank you for all your hard work, you're up against the clock, we understand that, and I believe council and staff are more than willing to work with all aspects of what you're proposing, so thank you very much for your delegation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will now go on to six, 6.1 Land Use and Development Committee Terms of Reference. Who leads that one off?
Mr. Palo will lead this one off.
Mr. Palo, please.
Thank you. So if you, excuse me, recall back about the summer of this year, looking through our strategic priorities chart, and making some necessary updates to that, one of those updates was in regards to goal number three, which was manage long-term growth, and that included the consideration of two new committees of council, and so, this report is respecting the Land Use and Development Committee, and that would be a select committee for consideration, and based on that, some previous information just surrounding the Planning and Development Department, and similar type committees, back in 2012, there was a Land Use and Environment Committee that was established, and the very general priority of that was to provide recommendations to council regarding matters related to planning, zoning, and affordable housing. And then in January of 2018, a new committee was formed, the Development and Land Use Committee, with a little bit more detail in terms of its recommendations to council regarding improvements to building permitting, development process, and land use, updating existing applications and policies, and ensuring district policies align with provincial standards. Based on the input through the strategic priorities chart update, we've further defined the proposed Land Use and Development Committee, which is before you, in Terms of Reference, and the intent of this committee, as a select committee, is to provide recommendations to council regarding land use policies and development procedures, with focus given to the implementation of statutory plans, local area plans, master plans, housing policy, sustainable development practices, environmental policy, harbor improvement, farmland protection, and maintaining compatibility of building bylaw regulations and the zoning bylaw. So getting into a little bit more detail of those. In addition to that, we've also provided some topics for consideration within the Terms of Reference, based on input that we've heard amongst council discussion, as well as throughout the committee, so one of those major ones would be secondary suites, as well as zoning bylaw updates, the more specific matters that have arisen from time to time with development permit applications before council, and some new additions that may not have been considered previously. So what you'll hear in Mr. McInnes's updates for the Economic Development Committee Terms of Reference, a lot of work that might occur through that process, we'd also like to take a look at a sub-regional level, how land use matters might need to be considered, so just looking outside of our borders, with many of our partnering agencies and municipalities, to see if there's some connection that could be further leveraged, based on the OCP review that we're going through. So ultimately, the true intent of what we see through this committee is to ride that guidance to council, and to answer those questions that arise from time to time, where, what are the policies that we're using right now, and if they're not working in the means that we initially thought, and this committee helped provide with staff input and community input based on the membership makeup, a recommendation to council to propose an amendment that would work for the best of the District of Sook. So that's one of the main goals that we're looking at, and is expressed in the mandate, to encourage adherence to the District of Sook land use policies, and when presented with alternative solutions to achieving the strategic goals of the organization, provide policy recommendations or best practices to achieve the desired priorities. So that's what we're looking for, and you'll see in the membership section of the Terms of Reference, we're looking for that broad range of people from the land development community, home builders community, business community, agricultural community, environmental climate change community, oceans and fisheries, and then lastly, having two members at large. So we want to cover that large array of land use considerations, making sure that one consideration does not negatively impact another community area. And with that, that concludes the summary.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Palo. Is there any public input on this item?
No, there is not.
Okay, I'll go to the councilors, any councilors have any questions or comments? Council St. Pierre?
I do think that the Land Use Committee is needed at this point in time, especially with the OCP review happening, and most especially given a number of issues around agricultural land that I'm aware of, so I'm looking forward to seeing what happens with this, and I'm trying to figure out also, in terms of today, are we simply accepting the Terms of Reference, are we striking a committee, is accepting the Terms of Reference striking the committee, and are we deciding on a chair? So if I could just get some answers to those questions, I suspect that it's all above, but just to confirm.
Mr. Palo, what's your ask here?
Right now, it's a recommendation to council to, or sorry, that the committee recommend to council that the draft Terms of Reference for the Land Committee be approved, and then, based on that, I believe the expectation would be then we go through the process of advertising for committee members to formally establish that committee.
Maya here.
Just a second, Council McMath had her hand up, and I can't ignore her, one moment.
Yeah, it was basically just in more detail, how are you going about advertising and collecting membership?
That is spelled out in the committee's structure policy. So the members at large, they'll, similar to what we just did with the OCP, will put a call out, ask for qualifications, bring that back to council to ultimately approve the members at large.
So more, my ask is like, how we've looked at, not everybody's online, not everybody uses the same resources, are we looking at spending an extra dollar amount to make sure we reach everybody in the community, or are we sticking to this?
We typically put an ad in the Sook News Mirror, and put the availability on our website, so that's how we typically seek input for our committee membership.
But nothing beyond that, right now? Okay.
And that's the process we use for other committees in the past, okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Ms. McMath?
Yes.
Mayor Tate?
Thank you, Chair Beddoes, so I'm in full support of the formation of the committee, so what I sort of envision is that, because we're sitting in committee of the whole, now is the time for councilors, if you wish to make any changes to the top, I mean, the topics are here for consideration, but to membership or whatever, that this would be the time, and then this will go to the next scheduled regular council meeting, at that time, we would formally endorse it, then put it out to seek out advertising for committee members, we could also at that point determine which sitting councillor would like to be appointed to this, and so forth, just to get it rolling. This all came out of our strategic planning session that was held, so I do think it's timely that we get on with it, so really like to thank staff for their work on this, and I'll move then that the committee recommend to council that the draft Terms of Reference for Land Use and Development Committee be approved.
Mayor Tate has made a motion, and we don't need a second for that, but I would like, there's other councilors would like to comment on that, so I think, Council Bateman, you are next.
Yeah, I'll be in support of that motion, of course. I just wanted to thank staff for coming up with a really creative Terms of Reference for this committee. I note that the 2018 Land Use and Development Committee was very technical, you know, working on the building code and a number of items we'll be discussing in the resolutions package coming up next, so it was heard, and we acted on, we've been acting on its recommendations. So in this new package, I particularly like that the district is now specifying the membership, you know, previous, the Land Use and Environment Committee of 2011 to 14 was You know, previous, the Land Use and Environment Committee of 2011 to 14 was primarily from the building and development community. Here, we see agricultural community, environmental climate change community, oceans and fisheries community, and the business community. So we're going to get a broad interpretation of what land use and development means. It's not just about, as important as it is, residential construction. Yeah, so I have no questions, but I just wanted to say thank you, and I agree with Councillor McMath, that we need to find a way to get the message out. Now, our new communications coordinator will undoubtedly be tweeting this all over the place, and it would be great to see a big stack of applications that we can choose the committee members from. Thank you.
Councillor McMath.
Councillor Bateman's right in my heart. I would just, I love this, and I will support it, of course. I would just ask that, we ask the communications person to also, any member during our term, community member that's attended any of our, I'm going to butcher this, any of our development conversations where we've invited the community to attend, and they've supplied us with their contact information, email address, things like that, that an email go out to everyone that's attended with sort of something in there prefacing, if you reach this, or if this reaches you, you also extend this invitation to anyone who you think would be a good fit for that role. Just so we can try and hit as many people as possible without there being a large price tag associated with it.
The question to staff, is that long request possible?
We do have email contacts that have been used, even most recently with the building bylaw presentation that we'll have later this week, reaching out to contacts. So we can certainly take a look at and see, based on those community development forums that we've held in the past, what email lists we have, and supply this information to them, and provide the redirect request as well, that they forward on to their contacts as well.
Are you okay with that, Ms. McMath?
More than.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other, okay, Councillor St Pierre.
We are in committee of the whole, so I'm going to bring up a few topics for consideration. I noticed in the first paragraph, purpose, there were a number of areas that aren't necessarily reflected in the topics, but that could be. And one of the ones that's come up regularly is just affordable housing policy. So I think it'd be really nice to actually move forward with that one, if we could. Another one would be the harbor and harbor improvement. That might be covered under Shoreline Waterway Interface, but I'm not really sure about that. But it gives a lot of interest from the community to do something about our harbor and to make better use of that particular asset, so it'd be interesting to talk about that. I'm personally interested to see whether or not we can do something about the state of the district's land bank, and I don't know if that's something that would come under this, but our land bank is largely Lot A and fairly denuded. And it'd be nice to have some strategies to put something in the kitty, so that we have something more to offer when we're brought to the table for negotiations. So I don't know if that's something else that could be discussed in this particular venue. Last two would be, I'd be quite interested in seeing some sort of natural asset inventory, where we actually value the, basically the services that are provided by our natural assets in terms of water management, purification, so on and so forth, but trying to make sure that we don't actually deteriorate because we don't have policies in place. And then finally, we've talked a fair amount about wildlife in terms of bears and whatnot, and I don't know if this is the right place to further that conversation, in terms of what we can actually do in terms of land use management with dealing with wildlife in our community.
Mr. Palo, will you comment on that, please?
Sure. I tried to keep some of the topics for consideration somewhat broad, so in terms of zoning bylaw updates, and subdivision and development standards. So we, those are just some areas to look at, but certainly with any of the other committees that we have now or in future, working alongside with them, and then ultimately, the results of the official committee plan and what they're recommending through that. If there's need for a standalone policy, I would look to this committee to provide support in detailing and more specific terms, how that policy might relate to land use development and compatibility with wildlife corridors or things of that nature. So we can certainly take a much larger look as things come forward, and that's ultimately what the mandate of this committee will do, is to determine those hot button issues and provide for that public input opportunity with those members who sit on this committee.
Thank you. Now, before I call the question, I'll go back to Mayor Tate.
Thank you. And just for clarity, like, under the topic for, like, say, secondary suites, that's where we would also have an opportunity to discuss things like suites and duplexes, garden suites, carriage suites, and how to collect fees. Would that be sort of all fitting under there? Because right now, suites are allowed in every single family unit zone.
That's correct. Looking at secondary suites, keeping the term very general, so that we can analyze all aspects of that. Again, these are just some of the topics for consideration, so if something arises from discussion on one topic, or it's not specifically listed, we wouldn't preclude it from the committee giving it consideration.
Okay, no, that's fantastic. And I'll just encourage councillors who are interested in sitting on this, if you could please email and let me know that, that would be great. I'm just looking at where we have appointments made, what we need to refresh towards the end of this year, what's been in for the term, and what's, you know, and of course, what you may be interested in. So let me know. Thank you.
Okay, hearing no other questions, we have a motion by Mayor Tate that the Terms of Reference for Land Use and Development Committee be approved. I'm going to call, all those in favor, raise their hand. That's unanimous here. I assume Mayor Tate's hand is up. Okay, that has passed unanimously. Next one is, okay, 6.2, Community Economic Development Committee Terms of Reference, very similar to what we've just done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Terms of Reference for the Community Economic Development Committee is in front of committee for review today. We've had a very strong working group, working over the last few months, helping to define what this committee may do, and certainly want to take the opportunity to thank those people for their time and effort in this endeavor thus far. Ryan Chamberlain from the Sook Region Tourism Association, Karen Mason from the Sook Region Chamber of Commerce, Doug Whitich, the former Sook Economic Development Commission, Peter DeCockis from the Work Link Employment Society, Lee Boyko from the Sook Region Visitor Center and Museum, Dawn Brown with the Sook Region Communities Health Network, Mayor Meyer Tate, and special thanks to Cheryl McClay from the Ministry of Forestlands Natural Resource for her guidance and her expertise. The group has been somewhat COVID-focused out of necessity so far. We've been looking at both the impacts and the recovery of COVID, but also on every agenda, we talk about the future and what topics may be beneficial for this group to tackle. So the topics for consideration are part of the Terms of Reference, and certainly open to hear more from committee members on that today. There is a request for resources in the report, but that will be deferred to budget discussions. You'll see that ask, as a number of other things that come forward on Wednesday, when we have our first budget meeting with council. And I think it's most appropriate that that's considered with the entire budget package, as opposed to standalone. If the Terms of Reference are approved, we will approach the groups that are listed in the Terms of Reference for them to make appointments, and of course, we'll recruit the members at large, as we just talked about with the committee that Matthew talked about. The working group, we've reviewed a number of reports that were done, sort of economic development, community development, related over the last 10-year span, and that really is what informed the Terms of Reference and the topics for discussion. We looked at a number of different frameworks, we looked at a number of different Terms of Reference from other communities that deal with community economic development, and where we landed was to follow the framework of the Canadian Community Economic Development Network. And I'm going to conclude my presentation today with a quick two-minute video from So, Mr. Chairman, you can see that this is different than traditional economic development that typically focuses on job creation and retention, and really goes into more of the community fabric of the economy. So some of the stuff that was talked about with the Planning and Land Use Development Committee, there will be some overlap, so Mr. Palo and myself will have to keep in constant communication, make sure that we're not doubling efforts or working at cross-purposes, but I'm very confident that we can do that and make sure that the work is valued from both of these committees going forward.
Yeah, I trust our management team will be looking at all aspects and how they all knit together, and I thank you for that presentation. Nice to have a little movie now and again, so that's pretty good. Before I go to the councillors, is there any public input on this item?
No, there is not.
All right, Councillor St Pierre, you're first up.
Quick question. I think that, at least from my perspective, one of the best things we could do is work with existing businesses, enhance them. So I didn't actually see that under the topics for consideration, but it seems like a survey of what our existing businesses want to actually expand activities. And if that's already in the works, that's great. I assume it might be, but.
Great question, Councillor St Pierre. And another piece of this is, of course, we don't want to duplicate the efforts of the organizations that will make up this committee. So the Chamber of Commerce is embarking upon those types of things right now. If they need support, this committee will be there to support them. But having everyone together, so that we're all pulling in the same direction, and aggregating our efforts but not working at cross-purposes, will be really fundamental for us early on to make sure we're successful.
And just as a follow-up to that, I'm looking forward to the chamber's requests from us in terms of actually, you know, helping the businesses in the community. The other question that I had was around industrial, because we mentioned commercial and so on and so forth. I'm assuming it might be rolled into something else, but I know that we have industrial lands that represents some of our businesses. Just curious as to whether or not we'll be able to address that piece as well within this umbrella.
Yeah, so if it's business opportunities to enhance the economic activity from those industrial lands, possibly it could be this group. If it is an inventory of those lands, and possible, you know, looks at maybe rezoning lands in order to meet our goals to increase our non-residential growth, perhaps it could be the Planning and Land Use Committee that does that. But again, that piece of coordination needs to happen, and I can assure you that Mr. Palo and myself are well aware that keeping pace, our non-residential growth needs to keep pace with our residential growth, or we're going to put ourselves in a position that is not desirable.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Councillor Bateman, I'm surprised, but go ahead.
Well, I like to hold back a little, in case anyone wants to jump in, but yeah, so I'm curious, okay, in terms of membership, I note you do not have a slot for a member from the Economic Development Group, which is that unofficial group of local businessmen, of which Doug Whitich is a member. Is there a reason that group has not been included here?
Only because it's no longer, well, it's a little convoluted, because the bylaw is still in place, but the committee is not working. So the idea is to have one of the members at large come forward from the wider business community, and hopefully someone who has, you know, been performing in the sandbox over the last number of years. And it would be great if it was Mr. Whitich sees fit to put his name forward, but there are others that have been still meeting informally in that group that could play that role adequately as well. May, though, be, and I think it's part of the balance, is making these committees not so big that they're unwieldy and efficient, so that balance between the number and the various other groups that are in our community. I think we heard at the pathway opening last week, that there's 150 active volunteer groups in our community, which is such a blessing for us. But we need to be strategic on, you know, what ones fit well into this community economic development mold, and which ones we can lean on for various other things, like parks and trails and other things.
Thank you, Mr. McInnes. Mayor Tate.
Can I have a couple of follow-ups, or shall I wait for Mayor?
Well, unfortunately, with the mayor, I can't see her hand up, and I get winks and nods from Carolyn over there. So I'm going to let Mayor Tate go first, then I'll come back to you, Councillor Bateman. Mayor Tate, you're on.
Thank you very much. So this is really exciting. Really pleased to see this come forward as well, and you can see that there's quite a lot of work that this committee is going to be primed or expected to do. This has been, you know, council has struggled over this since I've been elected, and we've seen community economic development rise up and fail for many different reasons. So I really like the approach that has been taken here. I'm also well aware that Mr. McInnes has a really strong background in this, so I think that has also shaped us well and is positioning this in a very positive way. So thank you very much, Mr. McInnes, for all of your work to bring it to this point. So my main question, though, is just with the, both this Terms of Reference and the other one, it does note the date of when the committee will be meeting, so like, this one is third Monday of every month. Are these scheduled for daytime meetings? And the main reason why is that, once this goes to council and is endorsed to go out for public, like, in meeting to advertise and receive applications, I think there must be, there must be just some way if we can sort of share when the meeting time is. That might be an important factor for folks deciding. And of course, we don't want this to collide with a council meeting. So I'm just wondering for comments about this one and the other, on what the time is, or is that going to be left for the committee to decide? And then I have a follow-up after that.
Okay, Mr. McInnes, if you could answer that question, to do the best of your abilities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and great question. And unfortunately, it's our template for the Terms of Reference have this plotted And unfortunately, it's our template for the terms of reference have this plotted in there, and you're absolutely right. The working group, as is now, we've been meeting on Friday mornings at 9:00 a.m. It seems to work very good for everyone involved. But my strategy certainly would be to do the recruiting, get the group in place, and then decide on the meeting dates, as opposed to, as you alluded to, maybe having the meeting dates and times and then having people consider whether that works for them. I would rather go the other way, where we constitute the committee and then find a time that works for everyone.
Okay, no, that's great. I appreciate that as well. So, I guess the one thing, then, is I don't know if this needs to be in here for the meeting that, let's see, sorry, I can't fund my glasses, but where it says the meeting date is that maybe subject, you know, will be determined by the committee? Like, should we do that? Like, the committee shall meet at the call of the chair on, or whatever, just somewhere in brackets there, just to add, committee will determine the meeting schedule or something?
Yeah, I think staff's nodding their head that they can work that in to the terms of reference. And again, this is going to be put to us again at the next meeting for approval, but that sounds like a pretty reasonable request.
Yeah. Okay, my other follow-up is just to also note when we advertise to the public that for the foreseeable future, the meetings will need to be held over MS Teams in a virtual setting due to the COVID-19 health and safety measures. So, I think that's important. I know that some really like to meet in person, and I totally appreciate that. But in order to have full equal participation, it has to remain in a virtual way, both for transparency to the public and also so that everyone can equally participate. I wouldn't want some, I don't want to miss out on an applicant with a strong background in this who may have immune compromise or someone in their household then feel that they are unable to attend because the meeting is in person. So, I think it's very important to know to the public that meetings are to be held in a virtual format with the exception of being council. And then lastly, I'm sensing that there could be strong interest from councillors on this. So, what would be helpful, another question I have from staff is, at some point in the near future, we're likely going to receive a report on committee liaison, anything that we need to reconfirm for the upcoming year. Would that be coming soon? Just so I know who is on what. And then also for councillors to think, if you wanted to do one of these two committees, are you prepared to give something else up? I think that is a factor. We have some, and I'm just saying this because some councillors right now are already appointed to committee, some are not, and I'm just trying to look for fairness across the spectrum here. So, I think it would be helpful to know that.
Through the Chair, if I may. Those appointments typically come forward to council in December. Off the top of my head, though, I do recall that some are long-term appointments for, like, the term of council. Some are annually, biannually, so, but we will bring forward a list of that to council in December.
Okay, no, that's fine, and I'm well aware of that. I'm just, as we look to ratify councillor appointments, I can't remember who's, I mean, I can barely keep track of what I'm scheduled to do, let alone the other six. So, it would be helpful just to know who's doing what and having some sort of listing, if that could be shared with me, and I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Tate. I think that was a good question, and it looks like the answer's coming in December. I'll now go back to Councillor Bateman, who I cut off rather abruptly.
That's fine. I'm used to that.[971.69][971.69](laughter) Just in terms of council appointments, it could be noted that back in the day, back the Land Use and Environment Committee of 2011 had three councillors appointed to it. And so, I guess there is always an option to consider a second council appointee to any one of these committees if the enthusiasm is high, as I imagine it would be for this particular committee.
Possible. I don't mean to interrupt, but no, there is select and standing committees. The other committee terms had three councillors and three members of the public. So, if we were to start adding councillors, we would then reduce the number of public. Or there's this formula that has to be met, maybe Ms. Machado could elaborate, but there is a reason why it's only one. When we have one member of council, we can have as many members of the public as, or stakeholder groups as we like. When we start to add more councillors, then it minimizes the number of public participation.
Ms. Machado, you have a comment on that, please?
Councillor Bateman has indicated he doesn't need to respond.
No, you know, I just realized, yeah, I've read that committee procedure bylaw and understand. I guess it's just, it would seem so logical to have more of us involved. But, okay, so I understand that. What was my other point? Oh, yeah, just in terms of foundational documents for these committees, you know, there's a long history in this community, in the municipality itself, anyway, of discussions on land use and on economic development. So, you can go back to 2002, and you'll find under our original mayor, Ed McGregor, there was a Economic Development Strategy Sessions, there were a number of them. We had the Economic Development Commission for five years. We had the Mayor's Advisory Panel on Economic Development. And the 2010 OCP has an extensive section on tourism, developing the tourism economy, and also hiring an economic development officer as a top priority. So, I know on Wednesday we'll be hearing about this ED officer, Community Development Officer. But as a preview through you to the CAO, could you tell us a bit more about that position and what it would entail?
So, if you, again, economic development has really changed, and typically it really was focused on the business community. Attracting and retaining businesses was really the core of economic development. When you bring in community economic development, that community piece really does bring in more of the social side of things, the fabric of our community, and how that, really the goal is more quality of life indicators as opposed to economic indicators. So, there's always a balance there. But the practitioner that I'm going to be looking for, if this is approved and we do recruit, is someone who is well-versed in community economic development and not in just the traditional economic development. And there's courses, I think Waterloo is really leading the way with the technical training in community economic development and traditional economic development. So, some technical training and really someone who has some experience in the community economic development field, and we can hit the road running. And to your point about the previous reports, our working group is really, I've really enjoyed working with this group. There's not a big desire to do another strategy. There is a big desire to do the document review, which we have done, and come up with a work plan based on that, where we don't spend the first 12 months of the mandate spinning our wheels and looking for things to do, because there are a lot of things that have been identified right now and are still very relevant.
Thank you. Any other questions there, Councillor Bateman? If there's no other comments from council, if somebody would like to make that nice motion?
Right here.
Oh, there you go. Council MacMath is making the motion. You can read that off, Council MacMath. Yes, please.
That the Committee of Hull recommends that the terms of reference for Community Economic Development Committee be approved.
That motion is being made. We do not need a second or any questions to the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor raise their hand, and the mayor can say yea or nay, whatever she wants.
Yea, in favor.
Thank you. That was unanimous, by the way. Thank you very much. Hey, I just want to make one comment. The CAO did make reference to a number of individuals that put a lot of work into the Economic Development Committee over the years, and I just want to echo that, that we do appreciate their interest in our community and working to make it a better community. So, thank you again to those people. I don't have the list in front of me, but I'm sure they know who they are. Okay, the next order of business is 6.3 Outstanding Resolutions Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The update is in front of the committee today, just as that, as an update. I will try and answer any questions that you may have. On the supplemental agenda, unfortunately, I provided the wrong document that ended up in the agenda, and that's why we have a supplemental. It's the most current resolution listing with updates from staff.
Thank you, Mr. McInnes. Is there any questions for our CAO in regards to this supplementary information? It's just for reference anyways. I mean, it's, we always have the opportunity to talk to our CAO on a daily basis if there was something there that we needed. Hearing none. Okay, Councillor Bateman. Thank you, you're first up.
Well, why not? Why not? It's only 2:20. And look at all this stuff that's hap-
I have to leave, so...
Okay. All right, we'll make it quick.
Point of order.
Yeah, lots going on here. I just, one thing I was curious about was the EV charger locations. And there was a bit of confusion to me in that there's a reference to the Climate Action Committee's work plan, and the work plans, oh, I think I'm gonna bail on this one, and I'll send an email and ask a question. Thank you.
Is there any other council questions for CAO?
Yes, Chair Meadows.
Okay, Councillor St Pierre, hit me first, so you're next.
It was just a quick question in terms of, I know that at some point, items are considered as to whether or not they're still a priority. I see that a lot of in-progress and a lot of on hold. Some of them don't necessarily seem to be high in the relevance, so I'm just wondering how's that being sorted out in the queue? And, you know, is there stuff that eventually just, what's the process for taking something directly out of the queue if it's no longer relevant?
So, I've been trying to use my time with this current council and the priority-setting exercises that I've been through in my first 14 months or whatever it is here, to try and, again, use that to prioritize the things that are on the resolution list. Because there's certain things that align quite nicely, and there's certain things that are sort of in the periphery, and there may be a plan coming together that will deal with that. So, don't put a whole lot of time and effort into that until we get the go-ahead on these things. So, really trying to use the exercise we went through on June 29th and August 7th as the latest litmus test to try and prioritize that listing.
Thank you.
Mayor Tate?
Thank you, Chair. So, a lot of these seemingly, as others have said, are in the works, and then some may come be budgetary impact if we get the information. I was just looking at the one on, like, for victim services, that we're waiting on some information from sort of external partners. So, is that something, then, that we can tie into our budget planning work in some ways and then, or not? I guess we have our first round of budget deliberations coming off on Wednesday. I am curious just to see, just to get an update from the RCMP in terms of where they're at. So, this is kind of leading a bit off topic, but it does tie into that first resolution. A, will the RCMP be presenting at some point through our budget process? And then, secondly, I guess these disappear once they've been acted on, because only council can rescind them, I suppose. So, would we then, when would we expect the next addition of this? Would it be in the spring, once we get through budget and all that sort of service planning work? Or would it be an annual basis? We won't see it again till next fall? So, there's sort of a mix of questions there, sorry.
Yes, hopefully you will see this on a quarterly basis as we bring forward the updates to the strategic priorities chart as well. To your question regarding the RCMP, the RCMP, as well as all departments, have spent time with our Director of Finance. Director of Finance will be reporting to council Wednesday on the 21st on the departmental needs of all departments, including the RCMP.
Okay. Whoops. Okay, no, that's fantastic. And then things like the crosswalk, we'll stay with the SPA committee, and then they would provide it, you know, I guess I'm assuming then that now that SPA is up and rolling, they'll provide a recommendation as to whether or not they want to advance that work or not. And then the only other one was on the service, the sort of fee for service agreements that we have with external groups. I thought that we still have an outstanding resolution, or maybe we've replaced it with a new one, about getting an update on the service agreements and the status of the various sort of external grants that we've handed out. It would be good to sort of know that status before we cement it all into the budget for the next year. Or am I just missing that in this sheet here? No, it's here. Okay. I answered my own question as I was flipping through it. Great, thank you so much. And I just want to thank our staff for helping with the resident queries as they've come in, just through the info line, because otherwise that could have then led to an item, like, if it just sat and had not had sort of staff expertise or staff technical reply back to some of the residents, then it could come forward as a notice of motion and start to build as another resolution that needs attention. So, when we have all of us looking at that and providing answers, and also staff certainly providing answers back, it really helps, I think, A, provide the service back to the residents. Secondly, the item is answered to, and then we all get the information, and I think that really has helped a lot, as opposed to then the only other option is to put a notice of motion forward to get a report to provide that answer. So, I think that's helping with overall efficiency, but that's just my opinion on how I've observed this. But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. There, so I need a motion that the Committee of the Whole received the support for information. Councillor St Pierre has made that motion. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none, all's in favor, raise their hand, and mayor, say yea or nay.
Yea, in favor.
Thank you. Okay, that sort of concludes our business today. Is there anything else for the good of the order, as they say? Councillor MacMath?
Go ahead.
Okay. I moved that the October 19th, 2020 Committee of the Whole meeting be adjourned.
Any questions to the motion? Hearing none, all's in favor, raise their hand. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Well, for sharing. Take care.